Call the meeting to order and ask that you're doing this in the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal. Thank you. Thank you for coming out and joining us tonight. Just a few announcements before we get started. One is the board did meet an executive session immediately prior to this meeting with our attorney Tim Bup and our township manager Todd Ziegler. And the purpose of that was to have some discussion regarding potential litigation relating to the new complex construction. And in addition to that, some normal announcements, knowing COVID is still with us, there are masks and sanitizing equipment on the table as you come in the door. You're welcome to make use of any of that if you so choose. Agendas for this evening's meeting are back there as well. And I think there are some newsletters and announcements of regarding the trash hauler transition is all back there if you could use any of that. The agenda for this evening's meeting was posted on the township website, on the doors you come in, and also on our Facebook page. And if you did not get an agenda, they are available in back of the room as you walk in the door. Meeting is being video recorded. It will be available on the township website. And written minutes will also be available on the website after they're approved by the board. We'll have two opportunities for public comment. You certainly will be welcome to speak to us at that time. After being recognized by the chair, we'd ask that you walk up to the podium, speak strongly into the microphone. So Wendy who's recording the meeting can hear you. And that would be helpful for us. Township manager is monitoring the virtual meeting. Do I have anybody except Wendy with us now? Okay. And so just a reminder, speak distinctly and write into the microphone. And with that, we'll do self introduction to the supervisors.
Dave Bros.
Jeff Rogers.
Art Rutledge.
Bob Brown.
Jeff Ronald.
And to my left is our township manager Todd Ziegler, Wendy is our Wendy Brown is our reporting secretary with us virtually. And we have excuse our solicitor from this meeting. So with that, we will go to our agenda. And the first item would be the approval of our minutes from our July meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second on the minutes. Are there any questions before we vote? Then we should vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. I vote to the affirmative and July minute meetings are approved. Next on the agenda will be the treasurer's report. Are there questions related to the report? Our interest is getting better. It was about $2,600 last month. And a lot of money in fines, mostly related to a couple of fireworks companies have had some big fines. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the treasurer's report. Any further questions? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. I vote to the affirmative. The treasurer's report is approved. With that, we reach our first of two opportunities for public comment. Is there anyone out there who would like to address the board at this time? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Charles Fleetwood, and I wanted to just express my feelings about the new trash contract. I now can put out about half of what I could with Republic. And sometimes that's an issue and sometimes it's not. I don't like just to make, if you call it a complaint, it's just, it's just information, but I do have some thoughts as to what might improve the situation. And that is, if trash were collected twice a week, then I'd be back to where we started with with Republic. But that probably we would be kind of out of the question. Takes a lot more manpower, a lot more time. So if I had two of the 90 gallon trash bins, that would solve the issue. And I don't think everybody needs one, and I don't always need it, but I could use it. And so if that's possible, I'd sure appreciate it. And thanks for your time.
Sure. What's your address? Just so we have that.
Eight ninety-five Oakwood Road, New Freedom.
Right. Well, there are a lot of us on the board and township staff that aren't real happy with the whole transition, but they were the low bidder and the state says that's how we have to award a contract. Other people have asked about two bins. They'll be glad to do that. However, they'll also double the cost to handle those two bins. Yeah. So Republic was probably about ready to go to the bin system as well because what they're trying to do is have only the driver on truck. So that they, one, they can't hire people, they tell us, and two, they're trying to do what they can to save some
Cut costs.
Costs and costs. Some areas do have twice a week collection, but then you're also going to see a substantial price increase when you do that. I have the opposite direction with that big bin. It won't fit in my garage and let my car get in.
Too big.
They do, they do offer a smaller bin for people who might be able to live with that.
Yeah.
You probably can get, well, you won't get maybe six bags depending on how full you fill them. But a lot of people would use four or five bags and maybe they were half full and they can probably get those in, but we understand it's, it's a transition and it brings issues with it. Nobody knows that better than our manager and the people sitting there. It's, it's been a rough transition.
Yeah, if I could just add some clarification, the bins that were awarded to the fact line first, Republic Services did on that as well. They did fit on a very safe specification. So even if Republic was going to be the successful bidder, it still would have been one 96 gallon total. And one sixty-four gallon. And you're right, we hear from a lot of folks that we had, we put out six bags.
Yes.
We had some folks that liked that, and then we had others that were putting out one bag a week and they're like, well, I'm paying for five, we'll not put it down. So, you know, it's really a challenge to find a happy medium.
Sure. It's hard to please everyone.
Yeah. Now, we do have available and it's that cost. Township doesn't have the federal, but there are, you know, a week or two, you need it at your bag. They are available here to pick up, but they're $10 bag.
Yeah. Well, thank you for your time.
Okay. Well, thank you. We appreciate your comments.
Todd, I have a question on it. So you get the bags, they have to be put in that cart, is that?
Not if you're on the bag service.
Okay.
And that's a different.
Okay.
We do have, someone had the full service for the cart. There will be a cheaper, they're going to have extra trash and they want to purchase a bag and that's what.
You can do what we do. It's just my wife and I, and we never have more than one bag. So the family next door has five kids. They're using our.
Anybody else that wishes to address the board at this time?
I'll go really quickly. Not sure if this is permanent, but.
Just for the record.
Yeah, that's right. Ben Butler, One Melody Lane. I recently found out about attempts to open up the landfill over in Hopewell. So I'm going to attend their meeting tomorrow, which is specifically about that at seven PM at their Hopewell County Hall. And then there's a specific meeting on the 10th, also at seven, it's at the VFD in Eureka. That's being hosted by York Waste Management to address concerns. So I'm just going to go and observe and if I find out anything really interesting, I'll try to pass that on, maybe before next meeting, but I just found out about it. So.
We have a location for it.
I do. The, the 10th, which is with York Management is at, in Eureka at the VFD building.
Oh, no, I meant for where they want to.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It is going at the site of a 20 year old EPA Superfund site that they had to close down and it took them 20 years to clean up. And it is now the Hopewell area recreation area.
It's on Plank Road.
Yeah, it's on Plank Road. Buried under, I don't, who knows what, but my neighbor takes their kids to softball there and they have vents in different areas to kind of like vent whatever's down there. And I've been doing a lot of reading and apparently the residents near that area are told to immediately stop drinking water a few times a year because trichloroform or trichloroth- or ethene, I don't know what it's called. It leaches out and it gets in their drinking waters. And then you have to switch over to bottled water, which the water company provides. But my concern is that's not actually that far from here, guys.
I was going to say, how, how far outside the township order is that?
It's. The shack of Plank Road, you know, where Mount Airy Road and Delapack Road.
Yeah. It's just around.
Oh, really?
Talking a few miles.
Hardly out, yeah.
We're all connected by the same macro furs. And I think, someone correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're getting well water here from your company. Or are we getting Redmond water?
Maybe it's been served to the township.
Yeah.
Well, York water, I don't know what all the sources are, but they typically.
Red and Cord- and Cordurus, I believe. I looked that up today. It's just a long way to Redmond, but, but that's actually good for us, but it's, it's not good for.
So how do the Hopewell residents feel about that?
They've got a lot of signs of.
They have, they have a lot of.
Oppose the, oppose the.
Oppose the landfill and there's a Facebook group with 900 people that have joined in just the last week and a half.
About the, about the government, about the board there.
That's why I'm going tomorrow. I'd be, you know, if it was my board, I would hope that they would be, you know, really looking into this. What I found out, this is really troubling, is that before whoever ran that landfill would take money from other states, primarily Maryland and New York, to let them come dump there. They made money on that and the residents got cancer. Now they're proposing apparently to do the same thing. This is what I've read. They have a third party landfill company called Modern, who does this with other states, primarily New York and New Jersey. And they need somewhere to dump. So they want to like open up this site so that they can take part of the overflow from York, but also from other states. And I'm really opposed to that. Why are we taking New York's toxic chemicals? It's, it's called fly ash. It's the ash that comes from the flumes and they bring it along, but it's very fine. It's full, full of stuff and it blows around and it gets.
It's like what they were doing with sludge and a couple of areas, getting it from Delaware and Maryland.
The waste, the waste company is making money by allowing companies, but then the residents aren't getting anything for it except bad drinking water. So.
Well, I thank you for bringing that to our attention.
I went over my five minutes, but um.
I hasn't heard you.
It's, yeah, yeah, pretty upset. Thank you.
Keep us, keep us abreast of what you find out. Anybody else who wants to address the board at this time? Okay. We'll move on to our agenda then. And we have under ordinances and resolutions. I guess the first thing there is getting to the official adoption of our official map. And I think Jessica, who was involved in helping us come about it together and Todd, however, you two might want to start just introducing. Yeah, you're right. I should do, we should start at the beginning. Yeah. So what I need to do, thank you for that reminder. I have my note right here, but we'll, we'll suspend our board of supervisors meeting for the moment. And we'll open a public hearing, which has to be conducted before we can vote on adopting the map. So we are now into a public hearing and we'll do some introductions and again invite the public to comment if they wish to.
For everybody here and for the board, my name is Jessica Fieldhouse. I work as a planner and project manager for DSA Group, who is the township's municipal engineer. So a little bit of background, the purpose of this hearing is to provide testimony regarding the adoption of the township's official map. As part of that testimony, I prepared a brief, I need 10 minute discussion on what an official map is, why you want to adopt such a tool, whether used for, and then specifically for the grass packs, what's incorporated in terms of the townships and municipal map and why. Following my remarks, then I believe we opened it up.
Yes. That's correct.
Comment and question, and then potentially questions from the board, but there doesn't necessarily need to be any dialogue that the board wants to. So just to get into it, I just prepared a quick presentation here. So really quickly, what is an official map? An official map is an implementation tool, a lot like municipal zoning ordinance and zoning mapping. So it is an implementation tool of the Township's Comprehensive Plan. So the official map shows the location of planned future public lands and facilities for transportation, recreation, trail and open space. And then what it does is it extracts the municipality's potential interest in acquiring these lands from public persons, purposes, sometime in the future. The official map of the township's planning plan and zoning ordinance, the county municipal planning code enables municipal jurisdictions to adopt an official map. The Municipal Planning Code, called the MPC for short, provides the opportunity for the jurisdiction to include existing and proposed public streets, water courses, public grounds, street widening or narrowing, extensions, openings or openings. You can put in existing and proposed public parks, open space, and then green trails, road support, defense. Open space, preservation areas, natural resources, definitely. But we're, we're very comprehensive in the viewpoint of what we're looking at for the official map. So the benefits of adopting an official map, so what the official map does is it helps the municipality improve the local transportation network, make improvements at intersections, protect their natural areas, provide more space and recreation facilities, provide space for trails and sidewalks. And the way that it does is it helps the municipality acquire land in order to make these improvements. The other thing the official map does is it communicates really concretely what the future plans are of the municipality, specifically of importance to future developers or individuals who own land that might want to do something with that. What the official map does is allow the municipality to coordinate as a development comes through, whether or not they have a need for additional land for a park or do we have a need for additional land, as we discussed in this official map, for things like basements and rights of way. And it does give the municipality a competitive advantage in securing rents. We identified that we had a need here, an official map is, is adopted in a very transparent public process. So it, it goes towards explaining to a, a funding entity that, yes, we have done for due diligence, we've identified these future needs and it's adopted by the elected officials. I do want to make a clarification. The last time I was here, when we were seeking permission to open to the adoption schedule, I think about erroneous information on how I got this switched in my head. But at the last meeting, I had said, what the official map does is it gives you sort of a first rate refusal of the property goes up for sale. That would be incorrect and I apologize. What it does is that when a, when a property that's identified with a potential future acquisition or use, if that property owner comes in or provides written notice that they plan to subdivide or develop or do something else with that property, that's when the 12 months kicks in that we have a wish to say yes or no, we can do this. We'd like to acquire the property or we need rights of way in season. So I apologize for that, the release information. Doesn't make more sense to tie it to the municipality's building and permitting process. So that's how we have the official map is created. So anytime a lake developer, subdivision will come in, anytime a building permit will be submitted, township staff consultants will review that permit against the official map. If the location of that permit falls within the identified area of the official map, then that gives the township the ability to start having those conversations with the property. Now, it's important to note, once that 12 month timeframe is over, then per the MPC, that reservation of land is void. Does anybody have questions specifically for the board for? So just a little bit of a background, the township's first official map was adopted in 2004. So what we did with this update was we wanted to make sure that the, this updated incorporated recommendations from 2009 Southern Florida County Regional Comprehensive Plan. And I know that we are just now starting an update to 2009 Regional Plan. So more than likely what will happen is at the end of that comprehensive plan, if that plan is adopted, we'll probably have a few amendments to the official map and the ordinance that would be processed. And ultimately, hopefully the goal is, is that this won't be a true terms township official map or the Southern Florida County Regional Official Map and will incorporate all the burrows. Couple of things were removed. The previous official map identified areas that were necessary for additional rights of way for interstate eighty-three exit four improvements, for improvements in several local clearance bridges along I eighty-three. That work has been done. So we backed out of those sort of, we backed out of those recommendations that no longer identify for the township. And then what we did add in, we focused primarily on identifying pedestrian bicycle connectivity, making sure that the developed areas within the township and burrows. We are connecting all of our, our densely populated residential areas with the recreation system that's in place. We also included additional open space preservation and recreation expansions if needed. They may not be needed in the future and then another iteration of the map will change that. And then we also updated transportation system improvements where necessary. So the process that we went through was pretty transparent as open to immediate. We used the 2009 Old County Comprehensive Plan and the Township's Green Action Plan and the original 2004 official map is on a basis. We're starting, we reviewed everything, put all the relevant recommendations into that official map. And we also worked with the local steering committee. Supervisor Ronald, were you a part of that steering committee? For the official map? No.
Yeah. No, I mean, I was involved in 2004.
We also cooperated with the burrows and then went through the MPC mandated 45 days, we do a climate period for local municipality and York Planning Commission. So now we're at the point where adoption is approached. So the official map, I was going to switch through. Do you have the? Yeah. What I'd like to do, Robert, is just switch. This one. Yep, there we go. So what this does. So in this official map, we're identifying two things. We're identifying existing conditions. So existing conditions, we've identified all of the rail trail, existing and proposed trailways, existing and proposed greenways. And when I say existing and proposed greenways, they can be greenways that were proposed previous to this iteration of the official map. So greenways that will be part of the Southern Florida County Regional Comprehensive Plan, greenways that were being identified by the county and things like a rail, rail association. And then we also identified in this map areas of environmental or historic significance. So we can see we've got Fizzles Church, Shakers Hollow, Store Site, Sidewalk Village, Sidewalk's Marsh, and then where the township here, we have Deer Creek Woods. And most of the environmental areas here, natural resource areas were identified in the Township's Green Action Plan. And for one reason or another, they're excellent habitats, old green forests, important natural resources that should be maintained within the township. And then the other thing we did identify was existing municipally owned parcels. So then we moved to what's proposed. So I'm going to break down all of these and try best I can to switch between the map and the, and the presentation. So what we identified in the official map are. We've identified two potential municipal facility expansions, one for Glen Rock Borough, one for the Township. There are a handful of transportation improvements that have been identified. Some of them are carried over from the 2004 official map. Some of them, one or two might be new or would change in some way. We have identified two recreation area expansions. One was in the previous official map and that's from River Park. The other is at Windy Hill Park. And I'll go back to the map and show everybody who's been. We've also identified pedestrian and pedestrian and bicycle trail system, mainly starting at Elm and windy hill and navigating down through the existing recreation areas past the trail and then getting very close to the border of Maryland. And I'll go through that. We carried over two potential rail trail locations that were previously identified. One was in Glen Rock and then one on Tonal Road, just off of the interchange. Another thing you'll see on the official map, and I'll show everybody this, is all of the waterways, and this course, this correlates to the township's adopted subdivision and land development ordinance. What we've identified on the official map is that all of the waterways in the township now are, are boarded by sort of gray area, which is a 100 foot easement from top of thing out on each side of the waterways. And that's for preservation and maintenance purposes. And then we've also identified natural areas and I did go through some of those. So the first two potential municipal facility expansions, the Shrewsberry Municipal Campus and then the Glen Rock Harbor Works. All right. So here's the, once it's done, the new municipal complex. And just as a, just a matter of future thinking, if we were to need additional room at that municipal campus, the logical properties would be the three, the four that are identified here immediately adjoining this area. So not, again, not necessarily needed now, but what we're trying to do is just look towards the future of what we could. The other expansion, and this was in the previous 2004 map, is a parcel here next to where Glen Rock Borough has their zip, zip works. Oh, it's a park. So the intent of the expansion here, though, was not for recreation, but to give them a potential area they needed. And it must have been a discussion, must have been a discussion 20 years ago that they needed to shop the works facilities at some of them. So we've incorporated those two areas into the official map. So really quickly here with the potential transportation improvements, like I said, what was eliminated was the interstate eighty-three work. Additionally, we were showing an Elm ride extension. And that was eliminated, I think, because it no longer made topography and, and topography and current ownership no longer made any sense. So what we're proposing now, instead of an Elm ride extension, which I think was here to here, it would have come down from here to Windy Hill Road. Instead of that, what we're proposing is a 1,500 foot connection from it's only, I think, from Tola to Windy Hill Road. We're also proposing. We're also proposing the Windy Hill Road realignment with Campbell Road and Subdivision Trail that was also in a previous iteration of the official map. You see here, we did make some modifications, I believe there was a road connection through here, which we eliminated, but for the most part, and the other thing we changed in the any ordinance and the language was Campbell Road is seen already as an infrastructure improvements. When this official map was done in two thousand and four, it wasn't a regional alignment extension, it is now. So there were some changes that had to be made, but for the most part, we're still proposing the same same alignment, and I believe in time frame, if I'm wrong, if this were to be done, we felt that it was necessary to be recorded, a lot more design and feasibility would have to be done than just this, but it then basically this portion, yeah. This portion that we don't. So we're, we're eliminating this access onto Subdivision Trail in favor of aligning it with Campbell Road and Subdivision Trail for safety. Another is the P A Fizzle six sixteen and Fizzles Church Road. Right now it's a Y intersection and for safety purposes. Yep, thank you. So what we're identifying here is instead of the Y intersection that it is currently, we're identifying T intersection, and this was pulled from the two thousand and four iteration. And so from this aspect, we may not need a whole lot of additional land, but we definitely need additional right of way. And maybe a little bit of land in there. So it just gives us that opportunity. If we decide that this T intersection is a worthwhile improvement, then we've got the ability to start coordinating property owners, if a developer, if for some reason a future developer or developer here, then that would give us more teeth and ability to sort of get the improvements that we want. We have additionally an Adams Road realignment shown and the Glen Rock Bypass. Adams Road realignment here. So again, another one of those alignments to to line up the intersections so that we're not so offset and we don't have so many cuts onto main railways. Specifically, this is Glen Rock Trail. And then the Glen Rock Bypass, not so much for the township, but this was the coordination of Glen Rock Borough. The, the, this is a safety improvement to reduce the number of traffic deaths at the terminus of Church Street in Glen Rock, this bypass here. And so much of it is outside of the township. There are portions that will flow through the township, so we've identified that. And that's an example of that kind of municipal cooperation. All right, and talk about the Miller Family Park expansion or the Southern River Recreation Complex expansion, the same thing, we've identified the same seven and a half acre property all showed up on the map. And then what we also did was identified three adjacent properties at the Windy Hill Park for potential expansion. Again, we don't know that it will be necessary, but it's the most logical point for an expansion. So here are the four parcels. Here being shown as a potential expansion for Windy Hill Park. And then the seven and a half acre parcel here along Strawberry Road with Miller Family Park. I'm not gonna read this, but I'll show it to you on the map. So I'll go through the real, real briefly the trail system. So as I said earlier in my introduction, this blue dotted line represents potential trail system, so pedestrian bicycle. And what we're doing is starting it here at the Park and Run, going down Elm Street to Windy Hills Park. It'll leave Windy Hills Park and go one or two places and can cross through these properties here to, we're definitely this part of this. Strawberry Field, or it can follow along the roadway here, and generally, you know, at the same point, we wanna take post through Strawberry Field to Miller Park, from Miller Park to sixteen, I can't remember what sixteen, I think it's the Mallfields.
Soccer Fields, Newton and Borough. Weather Fields.
But, yep, thank you. And then what we're doing is we're running this around, so this, you know, acquisition may not be necessary here, but it's wood, especially in Freedom Borough, substantiating the need for at least making sure that we've got public sidewalks. From the soccer fields down through the borough, this is Marjorie Booth fellow apartment, I believe.
Yes.
So that this will like connect to the heritage rail trail, come down along heritage rail trail, and then exit along I can't remember this roadway here and we're gonna Smith Mill Road is what we're connecting to. And those are the trails that we identified. Again, just really great, this is a good tool to help us coordinate developers to get the right of way that we need for something like pedestrian bicycle trail. We have a two trail, two trail head locations. As I said in the introduction, we've previously identified by the heritage rail trail. So again, just cooperating with other planning consultants down in the area. It's in, this is in the township, but north of the borough, which is trail location here. And then, as I said, potential trail location, and here on Tola. Is it Tola? Yeah, Tola and Elm, essentially, next to where the parking right is, which makes a lot of sense for the heritage rail. And then also what we've identified, I'm gonna zoom out for this, as I said, the historic and environmentally significant areas like that, okay. The historic and environmentally significant areas of Storeside Village, Sidewalk Marsh, Shakers Hollow, Deer Creek Woods. And then not identified on this plan, but probably should be for an amendment after we do the Regional Comprehensive Plan update. In the narrative is also identified about five or six historically significant railroad bridges that are eligible for identification on the National Register of Historic Places. So we're just trying to kind of button everything up, and if there are preservation needs, we've identified them in the official map, and that way the township can do the most, the most within their power to help these preservation projects if and when they come about.
I think just to note before we open for comments is bear in mind, these are opportunities if justified by future needs. There's nothing in the planning stage, there's nothing in process today. Some of these were talked about ten or twelve years ago and still remain. And some are right of ways, not necessarily requiring purchase of land, so it opens the door for some future discussion. I will say that I think that the map was extremely well put together. A lot of thought went into it. Jessica coordinated all of that and put it together. All the boroughs had an opportunity to meet and have input, as did citizens here. And a number of other ways that we tried to get various organizations to have input to it, so kind of all results from that.
The, the final property here that I didn't get to talk about is this large hatched area here, and this is currently, this was identified, identified for open space preservation purposes. This is just a property that's already sort of in a quasi municipal or institutional jurisdiction, we don't have a tool to certain. So and identifying this property on the official map, more of a thought concept we've got, if school district ever decides that they are not interested in using that property, this property has access to multiple different small private areas. It would be in light of a name, a good candidate for preservation, just to provide even informal access to natural areas within the township. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. I think what we'll do is open up to the public first and then to the board for comments. So is there anyone out there who'd like to comment, has questions, or anything they'd like to say or add?
When I said this to my neighbors, we all got really excited. So. I'll see if you can get this.
First job is to adopt, then we go from there. Anyone else? All right, we'll, we'll close the public portion, but still leave the hearing open for the board. Any questions, comments from the board? All right, in that case, we will close the public hearing, reconvene our board meeting. And obviously, the agenda item would be to adopt or not to adopt the official map.
Make a motion.
You've started, go right ahead.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the official map, dated Wednesday, August third, two thousand and two.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to adopt the map. Are there questions, comments before we vote? Let me see your votes.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, the official map is adopted. Jessica, I thank you and the group for all the work that you did. It's taken us quite a while to get here and get this in front of us, but a lot of that was due to your hard work, so appreciate that. And thank you for the presentation. I think that helps people better understand what the map is and its purpose and what it can tell you about the township, if it takes some time to look at it. Thank you so much. All right, with that, we are moving to I guess the ordinance, which would amend our volunteer fire and EMS tax credit program, Todd?
Yeah, all right. At last meeting, there was discussion and there was a session from the board to make orders to change up together. There was a question since the last meeting. When the original act was passed in two thousand and seventeen, there was some question or this direction, kind of a cheese side, certain word, where you could provide either or, so it's either, or the income tax credit or the real estate credit. But myself and C D A, law firm, looking at the original act, it appears if you can offer, of course, came up. Now, we already have the Urbanfront Act credit in place for volunteers who are residents. The township and volunteers are part of the free private companies serving, serving township. And that credit is up to five hundred dollars per year. The initial act in two thousand and seventeen allowed up to, they credit up to twenty percent of your real estate tax. They have since amended to two thousand and twenty one, and they now allow that tax credit on real estate just for your municipal. Not your county or state. Up to a hundred percent. And the reason we didn't give you twenty percent, who doesn't, who doesn't pay more in this rate than the benefit? Because we have, for example, in twenty one, we had ten volunteers who were residents, were all, were, were in real estate, not sorry, or do come back straight. The base value of the real estate tax, the roof can combine is a hundred fifty four dollars. So twenty percent of that, yeah, so, so what the, what the board, you know, sentenced for last month, I don't know, they had some for now, is a horrible motion to authorize advertising of an ordinance to add the real estate tax credit up to a hundred percent. In addition to our earned income tax credit of five hundred dollars. I just need a motion to authorize advertising of the ordinance to adopt.
I'll make that, what you just said.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second, which would advertise the ordinance to increase the real estate tax credit to volunteer farm into a hundred percent and maintain the five hundred dollar on the earned income tax. Are there questions from the board? We'll vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative, so we have authorized that to be advertised. And then we have one more under ordinances, and that is a, I guess, a substantial revision, at least in volume, to the stormwater management.
Correct. I'm not asking, we're not asking the board to take it back to the list because it's pretty lengthy.
Long read.
Long read, yes. Long to die. Our engineer, Jeff Hughes, C S Davidson, recommended the board adopt it, but I knew myself, I haven't had the opportunity to review in detail, so.
Do you think they could do just a quick summary of what the changes are?
Sure.
So we don't have to try to compare, because they probably know. If they could do a, not anything lengthy, but just a little overview summary of the substantial changes, it would help us. As I understand it, this is basically to bring our ordinance in line with recently passed legislation at the state level.
Yeah, it actually, it's blessings, or blessings or requirements, where the important place now.
Wonderful. Love deregulation.
So for our, for our residents, it's a good thing.
Yeah, so it's really informational.
Okay, so we'll, we'll look forward to see more of that in the next meeting. And I think that's all under ordinances, but under subdivision and land development, we have a couple of things, the Spelman properties.
We, we do have Mr. Spelman here as well, and Fox and Wyer. Thank you, Brian Cox, if there's any questions or anything. This has been through staff review, reported on to the passage plan admission. And earlier, as you said, earlier this month, last month in July, we did review it for the recommended approval of the modification request, involved the plan, and the plan was conditionally approved, provided that all the comments outlined in C S Davidson's July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty two, flutter or address. But basically, this is at the end of Elm Drive, close to the west area of the Windy Hill Park. As you can see, this is the main tract here, this lower portion is all, I call it a metal area. That means workhouse, yeah, right down storage building. So I had this first thing, I don't know if you folks that I did want to add. Pretty straightforward financing. The modification requests are doing major requirement for a preliminary plan, beginning based on the size and scope and magnitude of the project, it's very small. Improvement of existing rubbery, the kind of standards, it comes with moves, if that's just really important, improve to requirements to event development, which is country of all type, muscle slash activities. And all the plant construction under the driveway, rest and for a lot of the patients for that, physical receipt minimal traffic. And it proves the purpose of use of twelve inch plank and planks, the business sheet, the official. And again, our engineers review those, staffs review them, the township planning permission, and all parties recommend to the board of the draft.
When, when I look at the C S Davidson letter, it looks like regarding curbing and sidewalks, that they're saying what's, that they would recommend a modification that refers this to the time of the land development plan. By reading that correctly, that's.
That's what it says here.
July fourteenth, second page. Yeah, backside. So this is the minimum roadway standard. The sidewalk, the concrete curbing, they're saying, what, at least the engineers say is I'd support this modification. Modification to defer the requirement to the land development plan submission.
Oh my, I knew that is common. On uh on subdivision for to come to the market, because that's what the document for this point is.
Correct.
Yeah, there's there was a discussion on that, I'm not sure. That language is used for the subdivision toward. To come to the market, but I don't think it was ever mentioned in this.
So did they did they mix their comments up?
Appears that way, but this is the first. Well, I think that needs to be learned on. The fact of what's in the game for a little bit.
Here's mine.
That's for next month. Same.
You're right, it does say it's 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 attached to the wrong thing, I think, Todd. I think I shouldn't have that view. The letter does say. Front side does say uh just. Just not commerce center and marketplace.
I remember that.
I mean, so. So this probably shouldn't be in here. Sorry about that, I I didn't read.
Is correct.
Yeah, I did before.
It was incorrectly copied. Do we have the original?
Here's what I suggest to do.
Yes.
Act personal modification request.
Which is supported.
Well, that's supportive.
Contention upon this letter?
No.
Okay.
Letter applies to the land development plan. Um and then just in your motion. Now, just if you're if you're ready to approve the land development plans, just in your motion, put uh contingent on questionable comments of C S Davidson.
Well played, falls under a nice umbrella there, I like that title. All right.
So look at the modification request first.
Uh I'd make a motion to approve the modification request. Uh three modification requests, just to be clear.
There are three of those as listed, right?
P- preliminary plan submission. Improvement of existing roadway to current standards, any culvert pipe construction.
All right, we have a motion to approve the three modifications as requested and set forth the application.
Yeah, for uh I just want to clarify because my client has.
Just for the record.
Bob Sandmeyer. Site design concepts.
Thank you.
You're welcome, um we have five modifications on our list.
And that is.
An additional stormwater management.
Yes, so I have one of your plans that's down on the modification.
Well, I'm not sure what process or what made through, like I believe Jeff Schub didn't address all the comments around this.
Right, yeah, Rob says we have the application for a modification request.
Would this be in addition to another one that I had?
Maybe table it till next month. Maybe table it till next month, yeah.
This is the modification.
That's correct. Now, is there a different one for waivers also now? There's a private. Both same.
So we prefer not having landscape.
Yeah, that's that's what I was gonna go through real quick.
There we go.
But I think just right through those that are on the uh the plan.
Okay, I just want to make sure what I had was the same. Yeah, you did, you did just mention the the modification for number one. Didn't mention that one, the second one, which requires all commercial development provide fewer than two access drives. I think that was.
That that was not on.
Right.
And again, they recommended.
Which one?
Which one? Modification be approved. Because of the size of the building, seventy-four thousand square feet is probably generally.
So which one are you looking at?
Number two.
Yeah, the.
Which requires all commercial land developments provide the fewer than two access drives.
Okay.
This is for the board that asks.
So both engineer.
Yes.
Staff and planning commission both concur.
Okay, third one is the all structures in excess of a hundred or eight hundred square feet of floor must use roof drain sewage pits.
Again, that was discussed. That's recommended for approval because we actually have a uh infiltration base.
Right, I think I remember that coming up somewhere.
Right.
Okay, and then the buffer, the fourth one noted here is a buffer of the uh. Existing vegetation on site of the project.
Yeah.
Oh, of the zoning districts.
Here's the backup. Yeah, the back, most of it backs up and would have had some would have done it. Yeah, uh and then for the bulk of the west side. There's a lot of pine trees and vegetation there already, so uh again, stay up with planning permission, but seem to need to add in the condition.
Yeah, and just to clarify, this also. There are two requirements for buffers, one would be your zoning districts, well, we're mentioning now. And then one that's not on this because it's not an updated plan. Is an additional for twenty-two seven thirteen. Which requires landscaping around the stormwater management facility. And we're asking for a modification of that because of the location of that detention facility. And the existing woods that are surrounding it currently right now, which are not being disturbed.
The staff and planning commission see that one.
Yeah. Repeat that again, I'm sorry.
It was um section twenty-two seven thirteen. And it's the requirement of stormwater management facility to have landscape buffers around.
Correct.
Sorry, Tom, but you are doing landscaping all across the.
Yeah, we're arguing the required landscaping, the only.
Act science.
Right, and that, and the reason for that is is we're packed because the woods are there, so we don't need it, it'd be like doubling up on something we don't need.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah, the uh. Be the next.
They've all been recommended, but we don't, we don't have them documented.
They they are on the plan, although that is not.
It should be, it's on our submit.
I apologize.
Yeah, same here, Lee. Do you want me to take a quick look at that?
Yeah. These are all same. They're all same.
Yes, they're on there.
So is that five or six in total then?
Be in total six.
So I guess if the board was so inclined, we could. Have a uh motion that we would approve the six modifications as listed on the. Planning document.
Plan for signature.
We could do it that way. And 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 you concur from the planning commission, you saw all those.
Yeah.
Yes. In that case, um I'm gonna amend my motion.
Thank you.
No, second.
I could say anything now, um no, um uh make a motion to approve the modification, the six modification requests. That are outlined on their. Um like their their final minor subdivision plan.
Land development.
Land development plan, thank you.
Then with that, I'll in five seconds, a second and again.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second which would approve six modifications as they are listed on the plan. Questions before we vote? We shall vote.
Aye.
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 I five votes to the affirmative, so we have approved the six modifications and. Thank everybody for helping us clear that up and move through it. That does leave um. Approval of the finer final minor subdivision plan. As well.
Correct. Note on that, I would just think of the plan.
Right.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, we approve the final. Minor subdivision plan contingent upon the comments in the most recent C S Davidson letter.
Typo on our notes.
You were mentioning subdivision, they were saying, so I said, we'll correct that.
Oh, so that should be laying the belt? I'm just reading off my agenda. Somebody's just testing our flexibility tonight. Okay, so. Now, I forgot, did you have a motion?
We had a motion, we had a second, you were clarifying the the motion.
Okay.
I believe we made it through, you were going to ask if there were any other comments or uh discussion, and that is I.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, we have approved the land development plan.
I think that was the most exciting plan approval I've had since I've been here.
But we got it.
Yeah, yeah.
For sure, welcome. All right, we have two farms, stakes, preliminary land development plan, I believe, Todd, this is just to um. Just um get current with the reporting.
Uh approval.
That's right.
No. I I would.
Good luck, I I don't think it's the right one.
Good night. So we have a modification request, which I think is a hang. Hold over.
Yeah, when when you're uh looking at the plan to prepare for reporting. There there's two major outstanding issues, which would be MTPS permit. And then the Penn dot how the occupancy permit. Which are both outside agency issues, it's not developed or ordered enough. Um but uh before we get to that, I think that was the, I think it was.
Ten.
Ten uh modifications that were approved by the board back in December. Uh two thousand twenty-one. Um there was one that was not reported in the minutes. Um but it was approved, and I will just ask the board to formally. Approve that tonight or reapprove it so that we can actually have it documented in the minutes that was approved.
And that we could could do right now.
Yes, so y'all are on your own on this one. I can't make any motions.
Oh, you're right, you're right. Somebody have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we that we approve that tenth modification.
I'll say.
Have a motion and a second to. Approve what we just call the tenth modification. Questions? We'll vote, starting with.
I abstain. Aye.
Aye, aye, four votes to the affirmative, one abstention, so we have approved the modification. And now the plan reapproval is just another.
Yeah, this is the plan reapproval again because we're waiting in this particular case for outside agencies, so I would ask the board. Um I I know we could give a little different approach, but there's and then. They're getting reapproved, but developers.
But it's not their fault.
Yeah. Um developers, you know, they're versing the outside agencies. So I would ask that the board consider granting reapproval for three months. On this particular plan, so we all have to come back, not every month.
So moved.
Second.
So a motion and a second to. Extend the plan approval for three months. Questions? We shall vote.
Abstain.
Aye.
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 Again, four votes. Affirmative and one abstention, so we have approved the. Extension. Do we have any others approvals that were left over, we from the last time since we started doing some thirty day ones? We're good. Okay. So we're up to date on all those. That would bring us to reports with the managers first.
Uh the interesting is um. We can saw we put in new water, so. Input from the public for developing a new seal slash logo. Uh we've got some input, so actually require advice, something to think about. Maybe you'll have three notes.
That's that's why I solicited drawings from other people.
Uh another thing I really want to throw your attention to is I included. Um as I do every year for about thirty this month and August to start the. Twenty-three budget.
Right, that's.
So I gave you a request for there if there's any particular project. Of capital purchase and anything related to parks. Uh if you'd like to see included in the budget, there is a standard, effectively, annual expense, um just. Please fill that out and we can give that back to you by September second.
We already. We already had some. Good discussion on trash haulers, I guess, we all know it's still not going well.
Yeah, no, it's uh it's it's. I don't want to say it's gotten better. Um because the biggest issue we had, it seems to be reoccurring, this is um. Rockville Road. I was one of the area I like to pick of. In particular, um then when there's a street that is missed and and we've been contacting the waste. The insurance sort of be picked up during the next day. And two days later, it was called and still haven't been picked up. Um so. I had a recall by Tommy, the repair for order, but I did notify. Dead waste by email that affected all of this person that starts with collections tomorrow. Um that provide start of exposing the penalty clause. Uh because it's been a full month, which the bathroom. Get things in order here, and we've been having a lot of questions. Two weeks ago, we had the pair of west side of strawberry fields is not collected. In the back, we got told Monday. Um but anyway, they've been put on their set, uh starting with their collections tomorrow. Although they imposed the penalty clause of the contract, and that's a hundred dollar fine for every missed collection.
That should motivate them. They missed the west side of Strawberry Fields again, that's gonna be a pretty big bill.
That would be great news for us all.
Couple of questions today, or I guess other complaints that. Um I guess they've they've told some people are putting too much trash in the uh. Bins and they weigh too much. So. We just will continue to move along. Zoning officer solicitor had no report force. Zoning officer code enforcement reports in front of you as. Uh we are missing the sewage enforcement, we commented to Keith on that, I think, Todd.
Yeah.
Code enforcement is pretty detailed as normal. Uh we were able to get rid of eighteen and only adding six new, so that's good. And fifteen of them are actually being continued and fourteen of them are in court. Um.
If I if I could add just your back to the crash.
Yeah.
We we heard that from one other person, from one other. But if anybody hears, they're not picking it up because it's too heavy. Um please have a call in here to the office and let us know. Because. We we allow, when we were doing just the bag service, you could have. Fifty pound to fifty pound bag.
Right.
So they're putting three bags and one can, so we should be allowing a hundred fifty pounds.
Mm-hmm. Report. Any questions on the code enforcement report to Todd? Then moving on, we have the maintenance report.
Uh anything I'll comment on that is um. You know, the standards, the. Patching rooms, sign work, moving road banks, parts and so forth. But our guys spent a lot of time in July. Uh getting the walls off the roof trusses. Uh getting the walls off the roof trusses and the metal roofing and everything on our salt storage facility. So the evening that slept to do all that is for the concrete pad. And uh I think we've done a. Done a great job.
I agree, absolutely.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we've done a super job with that.
Yes, they have.
Mike's leadership, I'm sure helps him get through that, so he's. And it has saved the township about a quarter of a million dollars. So that's the most important part. Did you wanna mention this at all, or?
Oh, yeah. Um I know Dave even brought up a couple of months ago about. Uh maybe putting up some road signs. The the one that you look at the last page of the maintenance report. Uh the one that you see most common is that the style that's on the bottom. Um you know, the one that's probably better, well, and then you know that and so forth, yeah, well, it looks nice. Going down the road thirty-five, forty-five mile an hour and you don't really. See it as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um I think the most effective are the are the. Uh they're probably about twelve by thirty-six, and they're true very borough has them.
Okay.
You see that Springfield Township. I think uh Hookville Township has them as well. Um so, you know, I don't know, you wanna think about that a little more or the style.
Okay.
I did attach, well, I did not attach, maybe put uh.
I think the green one is more attractive.
Um pardon?
I think the green one is more attractive.
Well, you can always get, and there's nothing wrong, you can get the the smaller style. If if you get any color.
I don't, well, the green one says welcome, I don't think the white one says well.
Yeah, touch.
I mean, I know the words are. Strange welcome.
So most of the people find if you look when you do now.
It's black and white, yeah.
They're usually black, white, or blue and white, and they usually always say welcome, they're saying. Great township, so it's true very borough limits, it's true very borough.
Yep.
Now, you think this, do you need to put down the bottom, uh York County, Pennsylvania, or because there's three other two breakages?
I mean, you you can put on there what you want.
I'm just wondering, you know, you mentioned before.
Yeah, the other the other two three townships, but one of them.
One's one's northern.
I I think again, the more words you put on the sign, the likely it is not to even be.
Okay.
Yeah, it's good point.
Again, we don't need to take it in actions.
Sure.
Uh but I I was throwing some counting. If we start out with the initial. Main artery. Coming into the township, I eighty-three, so that's where a trail. Eight fifty-one and six sixteen. Uh we'd take eighteen signs.
Yeah.
Uh of course, they're all state highway.
Uh we have to get a.
I I sent a.
Excuse me, you're gonna make the supervisor and said, what's the process? Um to to do this, he said, it's really easy. No, that's, he he said, all any answers that need municipality, just make sure it doesn't, you know, buy a site.
Even on eighty-three. Wouldn't surprise you.
Yeah, I feel.
So.
Hey, so it was easy.
So again, you know, if I had an idea which plot for maybe I could get pricing with our without.
I was originally thinking of like with with the the new logo potentially incorporated into that, but obviously that's going to cost more. Um and yeah.
The thing I think about the logo is get like a round seal type. You know, depending on what's inside, I don't know that to grow a real steel.
Okay.
What you wanted to see is Shrewsbury Township.
True, true. Um yeah, if if you could get some some cost numbers, um. I'm I'm not opposed to the to to the colored version. Yeah. And then maybe maybe move on it next month.
That's good, we're getting closer to that.
Yeah, that'll be nice.
Thanks, so we'll take a whole look at that. Okay, we have um. Uh do you have something on Wendy Hill Road closures?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to mention uh back in January when they were really putting Wendy Hill Road. Replaced two cars there at Forest Lakes, and we're gonna do that in about two weeks. Um cause the idea was it was a new round pipe, we were going to get precast concrete end walls. Then they realized that there were some utility conflicts, so they had to put the project on hold. They're now putting in the elliptical. Uh plates and they have to pour the end walls in place so that two projects can go about two month project. Um that are probably about halfway through right now, but I did wanna let you know that. We were getting a lot of calls while they have road posted, you know, road closed ahead and so forth.
A lot of people are using Magnolia Drive as a. Way around, as you know, Magnolia Drive's pretty narrow. Um. So we put some cones out along the street and then it might be going on two weeks now. We were doing a speed study on Mount Erie Road. But we suspended that and we moved our speed indicator signs down to Magnolia. Coming off both ways to help. And and the residents seem to believe that's that's not a while.
Okay.
So. So you'll see them down there, so we'll try a project, so we'll resume our speed study up for that.
Okay, good. All right. So you you have um and the engineer to report, you have the planning commissions, I mean here in board. There is no emergency manager to report any questions on any of those. And if not, we've moved to committees, we not had any need to have the American Rescue Plan uh meet. So we that we have not had a sewer permitting meeting, although Bill has requested that we consider having one. Um. I I guess what I don't, what what seems to drive things to me is do we have any real results from what Shrewsbury's. Perbs doing now that they sent out their survey? Have they?
That insurance of now it's moving.
Yeah, that's why I may ask.
Think that, you know. The survey that has been submitted, I asked Cindy to get a copy there on Monday, I saw it at the meeting, but. It wasn't handed out and uh she said she wanted to wait to get a couple more clarified and I emailed Jeff Raymire. And he agreed to give her a week or two to clarify. It came in a lot lower than they suspected, which is what I knew was in my mind, I think, I don't think it was over a hundred views all the other.
But is that not good?
That's a very good thing, laughing.
Yeah, to those who have a need for them that would seem like a like a no brainer.
Everyone I spoke to, I said, they they were limited that if you didn't use them two months, you could forfeit. For two years, I'm sorry, not two months, two years, and everyone agreed, for the most part, they were using two years, no way that they were using it or not. I think uh. You know, and there wasn't any large one, a lot of them that. Came in were actually real numbers, like midsummer was eleven, which they tried to get from the freedom. Jim Powers was four, and there's a couple of onesie twosies, and then uh. There was no project that came with the central washing homes. But there was really. At the authority meeting, there just wasn't any real actions, it couldn't be because you need to get the server release from. The borough council in theory. And the problem with that is at that meeting. That uh users meeting that was held. You know, I didn't clear clarity on exactly what was said, but at the authority meeting. Ryan started quoting things like there's some Saturdays. That the plant is running at one point four million gallons, well, that's not how you rate a plant, it's not. You know, any particular day, the state law has three consecutive worst months is what you're at, what you rated that. And on top of that, D P's never downrated the plant in the two point three million gallons, so they they do have capacity, but if you look at. You know, there's a Saturday that hits one point four, then there's no capacity, well, that was the kind of discussions that were going on, like, there's nothing to give out, right? Which I don't think it would came out of that meeting. I don't know if you got that from Mandy, that you have some perspective of the engineering report. That there was no capacity available on the plant right now, and it wouldn't be until the improvements were done. And as soon as the first improvement could be done, it was almost two years. And uh that was a a a new uh blower, which would increase the capacity three hundred thousand gallons. And then the other big change was the magnetic system that'll bring it back up to two point three million gallons. And that's great, and they think they can have it all run in like two, two and a half years. But there's never any, you know, reality check where, you know, if I get some sewer or a project that I'm trying to submit, it's gonna take me a year to do the approval process. And then a year ago, I'm not even gonna do that for two years, but I can't sort of process and let them submit the capacity. And and what I understood was if there's another meeting scheduled, I guess.
Between the the three boroughs, just between three boroughs. Yes, because my understanding is that they they all agree that there needs to be a new agreement, I agree with that now. And but the three boroughs, you know, are part of that main agreement for the treatment plant. Their commission, they have to work through first before they bring three boroughs down to the overall township into the fold. So they're working on that and and I I thought it was positive in the fact that they already had a meeting set up to get out of the dirt, so I I believe they're serious about it. And you know, for the board here. It would still talk about one point four million, I think it's rated two point two five million down on the day, the plant can handle hydrology. Can handle two point two five, where the limitation comes into play. Is the F loop quality to meet the Chesapeake Bay standards. Um if they they can only run that, you know, one point two four, one point four. To to meet their F world requirements, if they get over two point two five, you know, that's.
But again, D P doesn't regulate based on any. I mean, everyone in the realm will get that that tiny number with some things. So the three month. Worst average is what you're calling, so so any improvements that they made at the plant are not to.
Expand, I know that term used, it's not expand the night. But it'll still be a two point two five, the improvements will be made for the treatment process. Which lowers, you know, phosphorus and everything else that they have to meet for the Chesapeake Bay. Um discharge requirements, so that's the improvements.
When you say that they plan on the trees, the boroughs are gonna have a review, they're gonna work on their agreement. And then bring the township into the fold, if you sit in one of those authority meetings or somewhere there. You get this concept that they're playing on the townships. Being the bigger. Spending the money to fix that plant, and that's not at all right.
Well, I. Not unless they give us.
Uh no, I I had a conversation with Ted, who's the council president, and and Art was part of that meeting. Um who's also chair of the the sewer authority. And he's with the same understanding as we are. That any improvements made to that plant are going to be paid by the customers of the sewer authority, not the township. And we all agreed that if there was an expansion creating more capacity, you know, above and beyond the two point two five million. That's a different story, but they're not even thinking about that, so at least our meeting with with Ted. Um was that he he agreed that that cost is because it's to, it's for who's using it now.
And specifically said it's not an expansion, it's an upgrade. And an upgrade should be.
To improve treatment.
Yeah, and we certainly talked about the consumers. So I don't know if we can do anything more to.
I didn't know some of these that. You know, just heard, I think. I answered some of these meetings and Ted didn't go to the. He was on vacation for that meeting, the meeting they had. So he really didn't have a lot to say about that, you know, which is good, and it was Brian, listen to Brian. You can get some really negative information.
Brian ebbs and flows on positive or negative.
He does.
I don't know why.
He does.
All right, well, well. He is uh on Shrewsbury Borough and also chairs the Shrewsbury Sewer Authority. And is he?
He didn't chair the sewer.
Okay, he chairs the borough, right?
Chairs the borough.
But he, does he sit on the authority? Okay, so he sits on. Thank you. So I think we're still trying to keep ourselves involved and. It's just, I thought after that survey, there would be some quick action because if they don't, it's two or three years now.
And uh.
So it has to come from, and I would think with. A low response, it could be easy.
Yeah, but again, that wasn't the town at the authority meeting. Yeah, I hope when I'm gonna go to Borough Council next week, that usually doesn't, you know, usually isn't all on action there either and. You know. One of the things that I suggested was that. If that study, to get it to the township, and have them compare it to their estimate, because I really believe. The estimate that was submitted a couple of years ago is high.
Oh, yeah, I think so too.
And I mean, I think that would give it to the uh. The borough some relief that this is a. One of the negative things, you know, is hopefully it'll increase their numbers. And they weren't for the.
That's correct, yeah. I yeah, I. I think Aaron just wants to protect himself as much as he can.
All right.
Okay, well, obviously we'll have further discussions, that's for sure. But thank you for your input too.
Thank you.
Um. Supervisor's comments, uh you have mine that were added, I think, to the packet by. Uh somehow email took several days to get to Todd, I'm not sure why, but uh. If you have questions either now or later, I'd be happy to take them. And are there comments, any other supervisor wishes to make, Dave?
Not at this time.
No, no. Good, yeah, okay.
I reserve the right to comment later.
But no, no, no problem. We will move on to a number of municipal campus issues. And I guess Todd, um.
Yeah.
We have no. Construction meetings are in your packet, if you have questions, Todd and I are at those meetings, you can certainly ask us. No change orders, which is good. We have five applications for payment. So we have, okay, three from E C I, that's why you have five, they do theirs weekly, don't they?
No, they uh. I think they're playing catch up, they hadn't done any in the beginning for a while, and then they were doing one one a month.
These have all been reviewed by the architect, all recommended for approval.
Yeah.
And we can do all of them in one motion if somebody so wishes.
I'll make a motion that we. Approve the three invoices from E C I Construction, one from Low Mar. And one from North Bay Castle, as listed in the agenda.
Thank you, we have a second.
Second.
So we have a motion in a second to approve the five payments, if no questions, we'll vote.
Aye.
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 Five affirmative votes of the five applications for payment are approved. And we have the uh. Little more theft claim, which I just gave back to us.
Yeah, that um that that's information, I don't know if you remember back in, uh probably was the January meeting. Well, it was December first was the loss, so I think that was prior to our December meeting. Uh anyway, there was a theft that occurred down at the construction site of the new building. Um you'll see attached all the items that were stolen. Um and we have uh builder's risk insurance that we have to carry as part of the contract. We have a separate policy just for this project. Um that was submitted and this is the documentation. Um of what they paid and we had a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible that we had to pay. Total loss was eleven thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-four cents, and then shoulders paid. Nine thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-four cents.
Plus our deductible.
Or anything like that.
I'm I'm hoping they have things more well secured, I I believe I see a fence around it now.
The fence was around, uh they saw tracks where they drove. On the north side of our property, um. Across the soccer field and up between the Amish market and our property up to eighty-three and around the back of the fence.
Uh-huh.
Now, they did make it more secure by extending that fence up onto the the hill.
Okay.
Um and they also. Here in Kansas, support.
Good.
Cause they.
I'm I'm. I'm, I'm assuming. I'm assuming they were unsuccessful and any ring doorbells or anything. Okay. Sure, the state police did their due diligence.
Yes. Alright.
And again, I think just in the packet for your review of letters and responses to Murphy Diffin Haver regarding, changes, since that's all may or may not wind up in some litigation. That's probably all we should say about that in this meeting. And, uh, Todd, unless you want to add anything.
Yeah.
And, um, I guess we had bids returned on the potential sale of this building.
Yeah, um, we had a bid opening this afternoon at three o'clock. On advertised for about, you know, probably about five weeks. Um, picked up a little more activity once we put sign down here.
That was a good idea.
We chose seven desert parties in the building in the last two weeks. Um, so appeared to express an interest that was more tight than that. In fact, we had somebody nearby and saw the sign, so it did that. Uh, now with that said, we did the bid review today at three o'clock. Uh, they wrote it publicly in the screen, um, when two partners that were present. Um, there was only one bid received. That bid was, uh, by Jason Denaya. The amount of that bid was eight hundred and one thousand dollars.
Sounds like he was on the Price is Right. He was just trying to get.
Uh, I did.
One dollar over.
I did give you a copy of, uh, his bid form, um, it was, it had several questions. He had to work the clarification, asking for a feedback agreement, um, and several other things.
Was that his writing or yours or ours?
And that's what was submitted.
Okay.
Would you have a copy of this?
Well, knowing that we had a lot of last minute people to look at the building, but that it takes time to put a bid in, especially you have to have big securities and all. And that it was not, if you look at all the writing, would clearly be determined a responsive bid. And we have the right to reject that in all bids anyways.
And there are, you know, he raised a very valid point, you know, particularly regarding, uh, the oil tanks in the backyard, particularly, um, our understanding is to be deemed that, you know, their permitted tanks, so when they, and their operations are there, we need to, to, uh, we need to get that right. Uh, there is a lease agreement, um, which simply and, property or previous, uh, that should carry for the property, uh, but it's, it's very, beyond a, it's one page, uh, to say. Uh, so there was a question and I think, you know, that question was raised by some person as well, so, um, you know, the board may want to consider, you know, rejecting the bid, re-advertising, uh, and allow us a reconsiderable, put it back out there, to get some, some answers to some of the questions that were raised during the showings. And, uh, so that, uh, folks have all the same end of relationship and, um, and we'll see what we're around to.
I'd make a motion or offer a motion that we, um, reject the bid that was received, that we re-advertize. And we do that only after we do some clarifications based on some of the questions that we saw and provide some additional information.
I'll second the motion.
And if you want to include that you would reconsider, uh, the next round of bids in September seventh meeting.
If you, I think that's something if you can get the clarifications in time.
Yeah, I, I anticipate next week, um, this time we'll have that on the street.
So that we would, we would like to review that then in our September meeting, provided that the appropriate clarifications and, additional information can be put together in time.
And this is to clarify questions that Jason had raised, correct?
It's one of those same questions to raise by some other folks.
Okay, alright.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
I believe I heard a second.
Oh, okay, thank you. Must be on the wrong side of my ear.
Yeah, you are.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second that we reject the bid received, re-advertised, hopefully for September meeting, um, uh, with some additional information offered in the bid document. Questions? We shall bid, we shall bid.
Aye.
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 Alright, so five votes to the affirmative and I guess you will make the necessary.
Yeah, yep, I'll work with the notifications.
Okay, by the way, just to back up a minute, I did miss one thing, Todd, you had on there, uh, comp plan update.
Oh, okay, yeah, I missed that myself. Um, just want to let you know that, uh, last month in July, on the, uh, fourteenth, um, we had our first meeting for the, uh, the Southern York County Regional, um, Comp Plan. Uh, we will be meeting the second Thursday of every month at two o'clock. It's about an eighteen month process, um, till we get to the point where, the township and each of the four municipalities, uh, hold public hearings.
Is everybody in attending?
Yes. Yeah, there's a representative from each, each of the four boroughs plus, uh, myself with the township.
Good. And we did have in the package, just if everybody saw, there was notice of a zoning hearing board, a zoning board hearing, and, um, they did deny, a particular, you probably knew that, so. What was, so that was standing far as lakes, right?
Yes.
Where square footage.
Yeah, it had, it exceeded the square footage in the C E A.
And all that's spelled out in the document that you had received. Alright, with that, we have, um, own business. I guess the first thing there, Todd, a couple for you, the Miller Park site improvements, I think that's.
Yeah, that just informational to follow up what we talked about last month that we're gonna put that out, for a bid and then we'll receive bids middle, uh, December. And hopefully award a, a contract that our January second meeting, for improvements at Miller Park.
Alright, and then we have, um, line painting on, on a road and I think, um, we're ready to present that to the board.
Yeah, um, Bennett actually raised that, that issue last month. I was contacted by Brian Schweitzer at Shrewsbury Borough. Um, this is Main Street, this is Tana leading out here to Mount Airy. Uh, the borough is going to be putting a double yellow line and the white fog line. I believe their lanes are going to be nine feet wide, uh, which is, which is a little tight. Um, but it, it meets Penn Dot specs, um, right about this area here. Um, over to Mount Airy is the township portion. And they asked if we would be interested in extending so that at least this section of Tana, is consistent with the double yellow line and the white fog line, um. And that would be a total cost that would be piggybacked on with the boroughs. Our cost will be, uh, approximately seven hundred and eighty seven dollars fifty cents.
Where would that be coming from budget, whether it was?
It would come out of our line, like under the line item for traffic marking signs.
Okay.
I think it's a good idea to continue it because that'll.
It, it'll look more uniform.
Yeah, keep people on the same.
And, uh, hopefully. Well, the, the reason from what Bennett said last month that they're doing it is to, uh, hopefully get people to slow down going through there, realizing where their lane is and keeping it a little bit tighter, so.
Now, the, the only question I have is when we get here to the, the township portion, do we want to open that up to ten, ten foot wide lanes which we have? It's paved wide enough.
That's, that's, yeah, that sounds reasonable.
I, I would think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Well, that would make.
Do it in the space, I mean, there's, there's no sense in restricting it.
Well, the thing is that also anybody coming from out of area to the borough that, it funnels them down, makes them.
It makes you slow down a little bit more too, yeah.
And, uh, I think part of that, the borough is gonna put up kind of semi-permanent speed signs like we have. I saw that in there. So, um, that, that may help too, cause they're gonna be twenty five mile an hour, right?
Correct, Tom, and that is correct. So when it crosses over in our, it's thirty five, so. We have ten kids getting on school buses, who's on family lane, and well, ten, that's a lot of kids, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not scared seeing them walking across the edge of the road in their lane.
Mm-hmm. Alright, uh, uh.
This is great.
I, I'd make a motion to, uh, approve the funding for the, uh, the line painting, uh, for that portion of, uh, Toner Road.
I'll second. So we have a motion in a second to approve line painting at the ten feet.
At the ten feet, yes, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, so we shall vote line painting, both fog lines and center yellow with ten foot planes.
Aye.
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 Uh, five votes to the affirmative, that's approved, and for Todd will execute that horse. And now we have our traffic signal repair.
Yeah, if you remember last month at the intersection of Campbell Road and Siskiyou Trail, the signal works, but it doesn't, uh, function properly because, uh, Southern Auto Tech, they had some, parking lot work done when they did salt cutting and excavating, they cut a portion of the, uh, signal loop out for Campbell Road. Um, and coming out of their parking lot. Um, I had, uh, Milt, uh, who is with, uh, Milt's, uh, signal repair, uh, he's been doing our work for probably since there's been signals. Uh, when, when he was down, he gave an estimate, um, to replace the loop, which will get invoiced to the property owner. Um, the, the material is one thousand forty eight dollars and ninety five cents. If he actually installs, it'll be, two hundred, so that total is twelve forty eight ninety five. Um, if you remember last month, um, when Milt was talking to me out in the field, um, he said to put the, the radar mounted, um, indicators, uh, for when the traffic comes and stops, the, the signal. Um, he told me in the field, he said, I have to double check prices, but it's, it's probably somewhere around twenty five hundred, but he said, I haven't done any for a while. And that's pretty obvious and, and, and I, I don't fault Milt, you know, we all know how everything has increased in price. Um, to do the, uh, the one-way matrix radar, um, signal box, um, is six thousand five hundred dollars.
Missed it by that much?
Um, if, if you decide to do the radar box, um, with the, the money that we get for the repair, that reimbursement would help offset that cost.
So we'd be looking at.
But we're still looking at fifty, fifty four hundred, well, fifty two hundred.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was twelve, not twenty.
Yeah, fifty two hundred.
Poor math.
Um, I don't recall the exact budget line, but there are some areas in the budget that I don't think will be expending. Um, and in December, what I would do, if you authorize this, um, come back with line item adjustments that would be approved by the board by resolution, um, to bring those budget items back in line.
Which, I thought you said we're going to invoice the property owners.
Cause we can only invoice them for the damage for.
For what they damaged, which is the twelve forty eight.
Twelve hundred.
So we, so we, we subtract that total.
We can put the loop back in, but, you know, there.
Can, can you highlight the benefits of the, the radar as opposed to the loop?
Well, the thing is with the loop, um, you know, if there's any roadwork in particular or any paving or whatever, it, it, it's really tough to, avoid having it damaged. I'll give you an example, Wolf Road. Um, there where you go into the old parking ride where they paved that, same thing happened, the contractor came in, saw, cut the road. You can see the loop, I, I, I guess the end of it.
It, it typically, I'm not a signal expert by any stretch of the imagination, but talking to Milt, who again, has been doing this for a long, long, long time for us, and for a while. He said at the end of the day, the radar is less maintenance and we're gonna be out there to look at that a lot less than you are going to be doing that, with a loop.
Okay.
Uh, cause even though if they ever go to repay and pave over top of the existing parking.
We could be doing it all over again.
You have to do the loop.
Okay.
You have to actually do all the cutting and set the loop down.
So for the cost of that signal, why wouldn't the state have put up? I mean, that was a quarter of a million dollar job. Couldn't have cost much.
Well, the developer.
Oh, see, yeah, yeah, it was denial, wasn't it?
They, they could have required it.
Right, that's what I meant. I mean, not the state did it, but the state could have required that.
What's happening now with the malfunction is with the traffic.
Traffic stops, but there's nobody to let out.
Since by the trail should stay green if there was, in Campbell Road, or that parking lot.
Yeah.
But because of that looping, uh, it's cycling even when there's.
I, I felt victim to it about a week after you brought it up last month. I was like, well, there it is, yeah.
Is there a timeframe difference in one or the other and how long it takes to get it corrected?
Uh, I, I don't know how long it takes to get the radar box, and that's a delivery issue.
If we do the sixty five hundred dollars, does that mean we don't have to do the twelve forty eight, but we're still.
We don't, but he will still reimburse us.
Right, yes.
That's a minimum cost, minimum, you can do that.
Free of charge because they damaged it.
I'd like to make a motion.
I, I just, I was gonna make a comment, you know, if the guys that damaged fixed it, it wouldn't cost us anything. But if we go to the radar, we gotta come up a couple thousand bucks.
Fourth five thousand.
Correct. Yeah, that's the right thing I'm thinking about. If it loop in the ground, if somebody cuts it, you'll be able to find out who cut it and make them repair it.
Well, we will, we, we know who cut it.
Yeah.
And I've already told.
What's that?
You're thinking about future if it were to happen.
Yeah, if somebody cut it again, you're finding who cut it, make them repair it.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, but, I, I, I have no preference.
Yeah, I never worked on that radar. I've worked on a lot of radars, but I've never worked on that one, how, well, they hold up, but I repaired a lot of radars and they don't last forever, I can tell you that.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, we spend the sixty five hundred dollars to install the one-way matrix. That's a very, busy intersection and also then invoice Southern.
Auto Tech.
Auto Tech for the twelve forty eight ninety five for their portion of the disruption.
Second.
So we have a motion, we have a second that we would proceed with the, radar, matrix radar, I guess it's for that intersection and is it, the loop that's cut, is it just one of those or there are multiple loops in the road?
It's one loop, but it's meandered all around.
So one radar, matrix radar.
Will replace that.
Right, replace it, okay. Alright, we shall vote.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm on the fence.
Shouldn't have called for the vote yet. Yeah, we can discuss it a little more if you want.
I think for the long term, probably I vote aye, probably save something going forward.
Nay.
Nay. But we have three, that's why I saw a lot, I knew there was two nays, so, you know, it's all. But we have three are affirmative and two nays, so we would go ahead with the more expensive matrix radar and hope it's worth it.
Oh, it's worth.
Alright, we're coming near the end now, so security cameras in our parks.
Yeah, we talked about that last month, um, you know, I envisioned a hefty price tag for these guys and.
Not so?
I did a, no, I did a good bit of research and, um, the, uh, solar powered, um, wifi, uh, cameras and, or you can put a card in them. So I actually, I did purchase one.
Oh.
Hasn't arrived yet, uh, so we're gonna just test one before we get any others. And, and believe it or not, it's actually looking at the reviews for, for outdoor, uh, camera systems and everything is one of their, uh, rings, ring.
Ah, okay.
Whi- which is, I think, uh, with the pole mounting kit, I think was around a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty dollars.
It's not bad at all. What's the cost of maintenance that, uh, like, general upkeep or it's, it's paying for itself with this, the solar?
It's solar.
Okay, so we just have to install it?
The solar, correct.
Alright.
So I went ahead and just purchased one, um, because I thought if it doesn't work at the park, we can certainly use it at the municipal building somewhere.
There you go.
Um, but, uh, so it hasn't arrived yet, but when it does, we'll. Um, but, uh, so it hasn't arrived yet, but when it does, we'll get it installed and. Give it a shot and then decide if we wanna get more.
Purchase more of them, uh, and we're looking at both Miller. Yes.
So, quick, quick comment, cause I had one of those and, um, they are real cheap, especially if you get them on Friday. I feel like six, they kind of discount them, but.
Make a note, Todd, like Friday.
Ring will connect to your wifi and also sort of all the video that you slap. It's important, you don't want to go out there and run a, a, send a car every week and then reviewing.
That, that would be terrible.
So, one at my front door alerts me if it's a dog, pet, car.
Or it's a person.
So I generally just eat, and especially like at night, you catch wolves and foxes. And neighbors, we're all, we all have.
Wolves on your, you live on Melody Lane, where do you get wolves?
You mean coy, coyers?
Uh, we heard, yeah, we.
Okay.
Yeah.
That makes a little more sense, but wow.
Coyotes sound like insane babies.
Yeah, 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 they, they're, they're criers.
But, um, the ring does come with a, um, thirty-dollar a year. Cloud membership recommended, you can probably pass multiple licenses.
Ah.
And you get notified and it's just so easy to use, I don't have outdoor cameras by wise. The cameras are free, it's twenty-four dollars a year, um, and they also have a. Plus, we're, we're the same, it's connected to wifi, um, they're not solar. So if you found a solar.
Yeah, this is a ring of solar. Yeah, so we're gonna try one and see how it goes.
Well, uh, as far as wifi is concerned, obviously we don't have wifi at the parks, how are we gonna get that?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna check with the one business that's close by down at Miller to see if they'll allow us to tap into there.
That would be good, Wendy.
Wendy Hill, there is wifi inside the S Y C building.
Wonderful, okay, might need a extender or something to get like to the, to the roadway, but, okay, cool.
Good. That's a good, a good approach. Any other own business? Your business, we have a Penn Dot winter maintenance agreement. Think about that on a day like today.
Yeah, 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 this is a annual occurrence, um, this time of year where they asked us to. Sign the agreement and this is where we plow, uh, Thistle Church Road. Um, we actually do the portion into Dorst Township as well, out to sixteen.
They reimburse us for that.
Yes, and, and, uh, also the short little section of Baltimore Street. Um, six sixteen that's leading up to.
Is it, is that state or is that in Glen Rock Borough?
That, that's in the township, uh, when you just come out of Glen Rock before you bear off on the Pleasant Valley. That little section of six sixteen. Yeah, um, so for that, they give us, uh. Under the agreement, we get, uh, eight thousand one hundred forty-three dollars and twenty-five cents.
And we need.
Hope for a light winner, yeah.
And we need an.
Do we need to join?
Yeah, we, we need approval to execute that.
So moved.
So we have a motion, is there a second, a second to approve the winter renewal contract? Questions, vote.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Uh, five votes to the affirmative, that's gonna approve. We have what, Todd, I, I only saw one trash and recycling. In my packet, but maybe on this, I saw the, uh.
Say seventeen three forty-one, and then do you have one that says trash for empty home?
No, I didn't see that.
So the. Yeah, Bruce was the, the trailer with fire, correct?
Correct, that was the trailer that, that, uh.
Are they, are they planning on rebuilding, replacing anything?
They, they haven't told, they haven't applied for anything yet, we haven't heard anything, so I don't know, um. Then the other one is for, uh. Gene McCullough. At forty fifty-three Manchester Street, uh, apparently he passed away in February and the property's, uh, vacant. Uh, at this time, they did keep the trash through June while they were cleaning out and say for. Um.
We can handle both of those with one motion if you so desire.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to grant the trash, trash and recycling exemptions for those two properties. We shall vote.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Alright, five votes to the affirmative, they are so granted, you have some correspondence in your package. Unless there are any questions on that.
Your pleasurable reading.
We would have one last, one last opportunity, I guess there's still nobody with us.
Somebody did, uh, come up, Bob.
There, uh, someone identified as Bob Willard, um, i- if you wish to speak, uh, Bob, feel free to. Unmute yourself, if you don't, uh, we'll take this if you have no interest in speaking, uh, next we have Wendy.
The role of public comment, if anyone here would like them.
I have a question, if you guys would acknowledge me.
Go ahead.
I kinda waited until the end.
Okay.
Go ahead, man, you're, you're up, go ahead.
Don't mean to hog the, the mic, uh, Ben Butler, One Melody Lane. Uh, I kinda saved this for last one, it's more of a question. Um, last month I was leaving the planning meeting on the twentieth, it was around nine, nine fifteen, um. Coming, coming home on Mount Erie, coming down that big hill, there's railroad tracks at the bottom of, of Mount Erie.
Right.
And then it goes back up, that's where the rail, railroad, railroad tracks are, and I saw a car that was broken down. Apparently on the, on the left side with its flashers on, so I'm like, so we replaced the brick down, so I'm slowing down, slowing down. Stop at his car and the guy goes off on me, cause I cross the railroad tracks. You're supposed to stop at railroad tracks and he's got a little red maroon flag in his hand, I'm like. I, I just now saw you, I'm glad I didn't hit you, I was stopping to see if you needed help.
Was this at night?
Yes, it was nine thirty at night.
Unless you're a bus or carrying a.
Exactly.
Chemical, I don't think you have to stop at a railroad track.
He kicked my car.
No.
Like, get out here, I'm gonna kick your ass, and dude, what's wrong with you, what are you doing out here, is your car broken?
What time is it?
It's like nine thirty after the planning meeting.
Goodness.
He's around nineteen, he's kind of like a broken down July, I stopped to see if you needed help, he got mad because I crossed the tracks. Cause he was on that side of the tracks and I rolled down my window like, hey, you need help, and he went off. He said, we almost hit you, I'm like, what are you doing? And sure enough, here comes this little click, 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 little motorized. Car on rails with this other teenager on there, whooping and hollering, riding rails, and I'm like, what is that? Do you work for the railroad? You're supposed to stop, I'm gonna kick you, I'm like, I'm out of here, I'm thinking, is this allowed? Is there a club that rides these rails at night?
It is, number one, it's an exempt railroad and, and there should be signs, I know it is on Elm, it says exempt.
Yeah.
Um, but that is Stewartstown Railroad, that's privately owned. So you'd have to check with them to see if they are authorizing or if someone just took it upon themselves to put their rail cars on. But I do know on the rail trail, which is part of the county park system, um, there are, um. You know, I think they, I forget what they call them.
Speeders, these guys.
Yeah, they're little putt putt cars, you know, but, um, but, but they, there, there are, there is a club.
There's a club.
Mm-hmm. Now, I don't know if this group was part of it, I've never seen the ones on the rail trail out at nighttime.
And on the rail trail, there are always lagers with red flags in their hands, standing in the road.
Sounds like this person had a flag.
Imagine they do that at night, that, that would be ridiculous to do that at night.
Teenagers, cause I asked him, do you work for the railroad, he didn't answer me. No lights, just this old, um, nineteen seventies amber flashers on his car, he was wearing, wearing dark clothing, I didn't see him till he jumped out. From his car and I'm like. You know, if it, if it'd been an actual club or rail or railway.
Yeah, that's just.
They had, you know, they would have had lights, they would have liked.
Well, so did somebody take possession of, because they have those carts, I've seen them come by in the day. But they have lagers there when they do that, and it's come by in the day, cause they're using it to work on railroad.
These guys weren't working on the railroad, they were like having fun and I'm like.
Yeah, you have to follow up with the Stewartstown Railroad, not only what they would do unless they're out there, um.
Yeah, but, but I'm gonna call them now that I know who owns that rail and I know the time and I know the date.
Yeah, they'd be able to tell you if they had permission.
And I'm gonna say.
That they might like to know that if someone's not using it.
Otherwise, you wanna lock the carts, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Some of the tractor looks like it's very quality.
Yeah, if you go down Mount Erie at that time and I, you know, it's pitch black, like I barely saw his car, much less the guy. Dark clothing, yeah, sorry, that's, thank you for clearing that up.
Brad, did you wanna?
Yeah, a quick question, going back to the tax credit, we're, we're gonna add the, uh.
Yeah, and that, but that'll be by a resolution, but we'll do that at the same time.
And then just a second, then you have assigned, uh, for. For Penn Dot, um, a couple years ago. And talk to Senator Kristen Phillips Hill and.
Two years ago, I called Penn Dot, um, if you go north of York on eighty-three. And east of York on thirty, every tenth of a mile, they have mile marker signs. And so when I spoke to the Penn Dot guy, I said, can we get those top of thirty? And the problem is when we get dispatched to eighty-three, they send us to exit four. And we try to get the information from the dispatcher, but we only have a mile to get this information, is it north or south of the exit? And fifty percent of the time, it's wrong, so if we go the wrong way, it costs eight miles, which is eight to ten minutes. Um, so when I spoke to the Penn Dot guy, he researched it and said, this was two years. It was actually budgeted when they did the rest, but it was not done, so. Going our way didn't help, so maybe if the township, I know it's a state road, but if you could.
I can, I can reach out to my contact and ask about that.
And that would start at the.
No, it's for that, they can approve that.
So it would start at the Maryland Pennsylvania line and continue to wherever they are now, right?
I would just be happy with.
But you'd be happy if it's, if it's in your service area.
Yeah, and it, I mean, when you look at the ones up north of York and on thirty, whenever you're driving. You can always see at this one, so it would narrow down our response.
No, I, I think that makes perfect sense, yeah.